Heath, would you like me to run the meeting in your stead, sir?
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call to order the Horace City Council meeting for tonight. We're at the Horace Meeting House here. We have all of our council members present with the exception of Mr. Mayor, who is joining us remotely. Thank you, Jeff. We'll go ahead and declare it quorum and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Do we have any changes to the regular agenda tonight, Breton?
No changes.
Okay. I'm gonna be looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. All right, and has everyone had an opportunity to look at consent?
Yes.
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 Any questions?
No.
I'll make a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have meeting minutes from September 2nd, 2025. Have you had an opportunity to take a look at the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, any questions, changes?
No.
No, all right, looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. All right, we'll move right into the public comment section. Do we have any cards tonight?
No cards.
No cards.
No, no comments.
Okay, is there anyone that had any public comment meant to fill out a card and did not? Going once? Going twice? Okay, hearing, hearing nothing, we'll move out of the public comment section and right into the sheriff's update. Mr. Keller, thank you for joining us.
All right, last month, I was looking over, I got here a little bit early this time, so I was able to actually look over it, looked like animal calls were up again, I did take some notes on that. Out of the fourteen animal calls, we had nine for dogs at large, one cat at large, a juvenile goose in a yard, an injured hawk, some baby bunnies, and a welfare check on dogs. So there's an uptick again with dogs running around.
There was a city council member at large as well.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Keller got me going a little over the speed limit. So, city, city council member at large in Horace.
That, that's for next month's meeting, though.
Is it?
Yeah, that's gonna be under September. We'll have a full breakdown, including dash cam and body cam.
Make sure you put me in there, city council member at large.
Oh, no, yeah, no, you weren't, it wasn't too crazy, so. So, yeah, the dog calls were, there's an uptick on those again. Wish I had a solution or a reason why that is. One of the dogs, it looked like, did attack another dog.
Oh, my.
There was a small little puncture wound on the other dog's leg, that's being handled civilly between the two of them. They were warned, first offense, so they were, the person was warned as far as the animal ordinance. I also looked at, I saw there was four disturbance calls. Most of those were just kinda verbal arguments, or all of them were verbal arguments, nothing physical, as far as that goes, so they were calmed down pretty quickly, it looked like. Otherwise, I didn't see anything that was crazy out of the ordinary. Looked like deputies were busy conducting building checks, civil calls, checking on vehicles, which is the traffic complaints, making field contacts on people, they find out late at night, just making sure nothing's going on. Most of the suspicious calls were self-generated as well, just checking on different things. As you can see, we had a few of the wanted and warranted and ATLs. We conducted this last month and starting this month, as Sheriff John R. seen on the news, we have our new wing partially open, so we got more beds for people who have had years to take care of warrants and haven't taken care of them, so we are helping them out with that.
How's that going?
Um, there's, I think, some issues with the new pod, as far as stuff not working correctly. I know they got the bottom floor open and mostly functioning, and they're still working on getting that, the upper level. All the bugs worked out, so.
Okay.
Lot that goes into a, a new pod and a jail with all the controls and HVAC and everything else that we have to do for the DOJ, so. I've been doing a lot of training and stuff, too, so we've had a lot of nights, there's actually been myself and a, and another deputy with me, so that's been kinda nice for Horace to have a two-car, two-person car. Some, some calls call for two people and having that trainee with, we have that of second person on scene right away, so that's been nice.
Good.
Otherwise, any questions, comments, or concerns from anybody?
None.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Keller.
We, we appreciate all that you guys do.
I know the extent that you go to, to make sure that we don't have break-ins and theft,
things of that nature, so we really appreciate all that you do.
Yep, I've been able to get on the bike, too, when I haven't been training out at night, so I've been roaming around in the dark on my bike, too, so.
Have they, have they thought about getting you an e-bike?
So, I'm actually in charge of our bike unit. I thought about it when I, I bought two new bikes two years ago. I mountain bike a lot, and I just like the ability of having the pedal bike. I can move pretty quick with it, so, and it's nice and silent and stealthy and don't ever have to worry about a battery dying, just me dying, so. But, yeah, no, it's, it's a good, I, I like it, so.
That's the update.
Okay, excellent update. We'll move right into Southern Valley Fire and Rescue, I don't see anyone here. Any updates? No? Apparently no update today, so we'll go ahead and move past that one. We'll go right into the discussion on landscaping approval, item number nine. Nate?
See if this works, okay. We had two neighbor complaints about property at 6726 Seventy Second Avenue South, where the owner has placed artificial turf in their boulevard strip instead of conventional grass. And that is a violation of three dash oh-two-oh-five of the city ordinances unless the city council approves by resolution. You do have the authority to. A notice was sent out towards the end of August to the property owner, they've been very responsive and cooperative with staff. The ordinance does provide that they can request your permission for hard surfaces in the boulevard strip. They have submitted a letter making a formal request to you, again, it, it has already been done. And it is, it is essentially purely an aesthetic decision. Y'all's prerogative to either approve it as installed, to, well, to direct staff to draw up a resolution that would approve it as installed, or you can ask for a resolution that would require abatement instead, for them to remove it and plant grass back at your discretion.
Are any, are any of the residents that had contacted the city regarding this and not really satisfied with this, are they here at all? Nobody? And the resident themselves?
The applicant stated they wouldn't be able to make it because of work scheduling.
Okay. But we haven't heard directly from the residents that have an issue with this either?
Not beyond the initial complaint.
Do you know what the complaint was based on, just concerned about the non-conforming to code? Or is there something more to it that they're not liking?
That it wasn't grass and being maintained in a conventional manner.
Well, doesn't look like it requires maintenance.
No, they, they were citing the aesthetics, the, the neighbors making the complaints just didn't like the material.
They didn't like the material?
Right.
I mean, I guess in reading the residence note about their difficulties in getting grass to establish and grow there, I mean, from my personal perspective, I think it looks pretty nice. I guess I don't, I know that I've seen a few other spots around town, I think that have some of this, I don't know if it's public or private property. I guess I don't know what other people think.
Yeah, Brent, can you speak to the turf that's over by the grove? Is there, is there turf over there? Yeah.
But it's not in the right way.
Gotcha.
Yeah, the, sorry.
Is this a different issue because it is on the boulevard, which is city property, so it's?
Without permission, the only allowable landscaping is just grass, not even tree, not even trees, et cetera, without permission. And you can request hardscaping, which, which this falls under also from, from city council.
Um, Lucas, does this hinder any other like tree boulevard programs, like, I mean, I, I don't know.
A dollar tree fits, fits in this area.
Right, I know.
If it's so close to the driveway.
Right.
Even if it did, it'd just be cut in a circle, dig and put a tree in.
Okay.
Honestly, I, it makes zero difference to me personally as a resident.
I think what the city is trying to prevent with the ordinance is just pavement.
Yeah.
Don't involve thing, pavement and asphalt, I don't think the ordinance necessarily considered turf grass being installed there.
Do we have a copy of the complaint? I think this looks nice.
I was, yeah.
Back to Public Works this afternoon about this, just out of curiosity, because I'm curious. Their only concern was the block, the brick is sticking up on the edges, and they were going to clip it out with snowplow, and what is their responsibility to maintain it? So if it's a standard grass boulevard, put a block there, they're seated, move on. This, if they clip that, either one of those two kind of block ledges there is gonna take out the whole front, and then they re-turf it in the front yard. So if it were to stay, that was one question they asked, just what's their responsibility to put a block there?
So the ordinance allows the council to put on reasonable conditions for maintenance? So there's a condition that we have to put in the resolution if the council desires to approve this. We can certainly do that to say if, if that situation does happen, the property owner's responsible for the damage. Is that very likely to happen?
What, what's the purpose of the block?
When that's anchoring it down?
I mean. I wish the resident was here to discuss this, because it's extremely difficult to understand this picture without their perspective. I understand why they did this, if the grass has repeatedly died and it doesn't look nice and they're having problems maintaining it, I mean, this is, no offense, but they're gonna have a more upfront expense to put turf down with class five and gravel, digging it out and doing it right with drainage, which is what they did per their letter, than just seeding the boulevard, right? They were frustrated, they picked a product, quite frankly, it looks nice, I, I don't have an issue with it. It's not something that is long and unsightly or, you know, an oddball color. They make turf in all different colors, you can get blue, you can get yellow, you know, I mean, they, they tried to match.
If I could make a suggestion, your action tonight would just be asking for a resolution to be prepared either way. It wouldn't be voting on that resolution, so this would have to come back to y'all. If you'd like to request additional information, I can work on that for you.
I, I think I would, I'd like to hear more about it, I, I don't have an issue. I, I know that not everybody has means to turf their yard. But quite frankly, I, I think it's an attractive alternative to dead grass or overgrown grass. I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
I agree.
I mean, I agree, I have no issue with it, as long as, like, what Lucas was saying, if we can ensure that there's not gonna be any issues as far as our snowplows, and they will assume all responsibility maintaining and taking care of it. And any issues, if something were to happen, it's not on the city to take care of it.
Yeah, I agree, I do think that those bricks, they're stick, I mean, I can't quite tell from the picture, but it does look like they're kind of sticking up, so that could be a risk, and maybe that's just at their, at their risk. It looks, I mean, it might look strange when everyone else's boulevard grass turns brown and theirs is still super bright green.
Yeah.
I don't know if we are concerned about that, but. Yeah, I'm okay with it if you guys are.
I'd like to see what the resolution looks like, and I'd like to get more feedback from the folks that had, that's you. Because I wanna, I wanna be respectful of the residents that had a concern. It's very likely just a lack of uniformity, or it looks funny in the middle of the block, I'm sure, but I'm not gonna speculate, I'd like to really get to the bottom of it and understand their concern. So, do you need a motion for that? I'm assuming, all right, so I'll be looking for a motion directing staff to proceed with a resolution on adding turf and other methods, hardscape methods, or whatever that would be.
So, sorry if I'm not tracking with you, so you don't need a change of ordinance to be able to approve? Do you, are you wanting it, the ordinance to directly address it, or you're wanting to have a resolution which would approve this, which then would come to you for consideration?
I'm looking for the resolution that would potentially approve this and come to us for consideration. And within that, are there any other means or methodologies that need to be considered?
Okay.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
Okay. Does everyone agree?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Who would like to make that motion?
I'll make you.
I think you just did.
Oh, did I? Okay. So I'll make a motion to prepare that information for the city. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Bear with me here, let's move right into Suncrest Edition findings and decision. Lucas?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. The next item is the findings and decision for Suncrest Edition. You may recall that the findings and decision were on the previous September 2nd agenda, under the consent agenda, for approval. What we failed to consider during that was on past discussions of this matter, Councilmember Lance from pest recused herself from discussion and action related to Suncrest Edition. So we felt it was best to pull that item from last week's, or the last meeting's consent agenda, have it as its own agenda item for tonight, so Councilmember Lance from could recuse herself from voting on the findings and decision. So nothing has changed beyond that, it's really just a procedural type matter to just make sure that everything is done in accordance with North Carolina law. So with that, Madam Chair, again, procedural, Councilmember Lance from will recuse herself from any discussion and action. The council will just take action, I don't know if any further discussions needed, nothing has changed.
Sure.
Yeah, can you repeat the, the motion from September 2nd? Do you have it?
It was just on consent.
It was on the consent agenda.
Oh, it was on consent.
Approving the findings and decision, and all that document did was just state the decision that the council had previously made in August, I believe. Just putting it in writing
Okay.
for the record, for the philosophy that is.
So, Mrs. Lance from, would you like to formally recuse?
Uh, yes.
And then we'll go ahead and move forward, and we'll have to make another motion, Lucas, is that my understanding?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, I can go ahead and make that motion to approve the findings and the decision of the Suncrest addition.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Minor correction, thank you, Lucas, appreciate that. And thanks, thanks, Stephanie.
Yes.
Appreciate you. Okay, we'll move right into item 11, Sunset Valley Development Access. Breton, please bring us up to speed.
Okay, so this is to be brought, or brought back from our last council meeting, when I brought it up during our, or the ministry update. Heritage Homes has asked for consideration from the city council to allow a building permit to be granted for 6633 Seenic Circle. Uh, this is for what they would call a pre-sold home, so they already had the buyer, everything's all lined up, squared away. They anticipated to be into the development earlier. They expected it to be, the development to be ready to go by now, but it isn't. So they're asking for council to approve them to have access and to being able to have this building permit granted, so. Our response has been in the past, if the development has not been accepted, we could bring it to council. Typically, we have had model homes, a few, some model homes, so Suncrest Edition has had some model homes, some amenities, and some, and three-spec homes. So this would be in addition to all that that's already been granted. Uh, the development, they have not done, completed the final walkthrough of it, so our staff hasn't even walked, done a final walkthrough or made a punch list of it. We're waiting for that, to even see a draft-up punch list from their engineer, Houston Engineering. Typically, when we have a punch list from their engineer, then we go through it, add to it if there's other issues that need to be resolved, and depending on those issues, it, it varies on how long it would take for the contractor to address them. I believe Rivers Edge 2nd, we're going through punch list items right now, if I'm correct, yes. So, and that does take some time for like a bigger development, Sunset Valley, you're probably looking at three or four weeks easily, but it depends on what is all flagged as a punch list item. So we haven't seen anything yet. Uh, in addition, it's not in their letter. For your guys' consideration, the council's consideration, if you do want to consider it, is they are granted foundation permits for those spec homes. They've asked if they could build out those spec homes and just complete them. They haven't, they didn't give me a request in writing, but I'll bring it up for you if you want to discuss it, you can. If you're open to it, great, if you're not, that's fine, too. So we're looking for council feedback, but on this one, you had the written request. It was tabled at the last meeting to see if they would get the development done. Not much has changed from the development from two weeks ago, so.
Quick clarification, is there? It will take four to five months to get the above house constructed and completed, as we're shooting for an end of 2026 closing? Do they mean 2025?
I believe they mean 2025. I believe what the Heritage Homes indicated to me is that they'd like to get this, this couple into this home before the end of the year. So I believe that's a typo then on their letter, so it's end of 2025.
Yeah.
Did you, did you, you mentioned something about the spec homes and the, and the foundation? I mean, can you refresh my memory? We gave them approval to begin building the, the spec homes already, correct?
Yes.
What does that relation, what you said about foundation?
So, on the approval, on their request for having approval for building permits for spec homes, the city council approved their request, and it was to have foundations only, or to be able to get foundations started.
I see what you're saying.
Because they anticipated to have the development done by this point to where it wouldn't be an issue. The development has not been completed yet, it's not
Okay.
been accepted by the city, so they're asking if they continue with those. Uh, I think there was a miscommunication on their side, because our building inspection staff had in their notes saying council approved foundations only. They were starting to work past that, they're going through to the next level of inspection, which I believe was framing, and we would not sign off on the inspection because they're not approved by council to go beyond the framing. So we said
Okay.
you'll have to stop at that framing inspection until it gets approved, or until the development's been accepted to where we can do that.
Is this, is this an issue with how the request was written? Because it wasn't the intent of council to hold up on those model homes on framing or anything like that. We were gonna let them continue, but we were gonna work with temporary CO. We weren't going to issue final occupancy. Was it their request?
So this was for the spec homes, they asked for the foundations, model is to do the complete, to have the temporary COs. So the model homes, they are at a temporary CO state, so that's what gets confusing, is they've come to council with multiple requests.
Multiple requests.
They came to you originally with three model homes.
Yep.
That was the full-blown with the temporary COs.
And I had no issues with that, that's allowing them to pre-sell.
Then they came with the three spec homes for foundation only, is what they requested, and council approved that. Our staff gave them the building permits to be able to, for the home, so they're good to go. However, we won't go past the foundation inspection, so framing, or actually the framing inspection. So they're at a holdup right there. And then they came back to council asking for, to be able to start building amenities. So council's like, yep, you could do that.
We've been, I mean, this is multiple requests here.
So the council's been, that's our, my concern was, I expressed to Heritage that this is, at some point, the council is probably not going to be really receptive of it, saying, hey, you need to get development done, but we could bring your requests there. Now they're requesting for that spec home, so their request, or not spec home, the pre-sold.
Pre-sold.
So that's what the letter is in your packet, was for that pre-sold. And I apologize if it got confusing, because it does get confusing really easy. The three spec homes, they're asking to be able to finish building them, but that is not in their request. They had not give me a written request for that, so.
I, I'm struggling a little with this, do we have a representative from Heritage here?
No.
Nobody?
No.
Okay. I This project was supposed to be done at the end of July. Bottom line. We realized that there were some unforeseen, we realized there were some challenges, we realized there was some, you know, back and forth. This development is a first of its kind, where the developer's actually taking on the infrastructure themselves. We get that, and I think it's fair to work with them, model homes, spec homes. I'm not in opposition to that, because I want the development to succeed. I want it to thrive, I like the concept, I think we all like the concept, correct me if I'm wrong. I'm at a crossroads here, because we've continually allowed, 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 and this sets precedence, right, for what we do moving forward. And I struggle, I, I, I understand that these clients want to get into their home, but it would really be in the best interest of the developer to finish the damn development before they make promises to people.
Sarah, I have a question for you.
Yeah?
In the past, when we've had, you know, other developers ask these kinds of requests, you've mentioned things like, is it safe to, I mean, what if you had, if we, if it hasn't had the complete punch list?
That's the thing, we, we.
What if they had a gas line?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, I'm.
We've, we've already, we, we've always talked about the, the majors, right? So gas needs to be completed, signed off, electric needs to be completed, signed off. Streetlights need to be in place, we're embarking on the fall season, our, our temperatures can change very suddenly. And if we have residents living in there, and those things are not 100% accepted, who knows what could happen? Not to mention the fact that if a snowplow can't see, and with winter conditions, I mean, they might just run into something. It happens, guys, so. I had no issues with spec homes, model homes, and nobody's living in them, right? And that allows them to move forward, I think that's reasonable? I struggle with this. I'm gonna open it up to you guys and ask you how you feel.
Well, I guess my question is to you too, Sarah, so, so the note says their request is with the understanding that no CO will be issued prior to. Well, I guess my question is to you too, Sarah, so, so the note says, their request is with the understanding that no CO will be issued prior to turnover. Oh wait. When they say turnover of the development, I guess maybe they, I thought they were talking more in relation of somebody actually occupying the home, which might be a given.
Which, which I'm reading that. And it also says that they're expecting Dakota Underground to be done with their work by mid-September. Well, guys, it's September fifteenth, there's only thirty days in September, right? So, what was the date of this letter?
And Sarah.
Eight twenty-nine.
That's why we tabled it from last meeting, because I think basically our consensus was, they say mid-September, maybe it will be completed by
Right.
this meeting, and then we can take action.
Let's talk about that, so how close are we? What progress have we seen in the last two weeks since receiving this letter out at Sunset Valley?
So what I know is they've created some more open boulevards, they're out seating and hyper-malching them. As far as the punch list, I'm still, there's supposed to be two cottons out there with the city staff. I was also told that they wasn't ready to reconvene with that, so they didn't even have a meeting today. And I don't know if there's a proposal for when it should be, when it should be done. So like Brenton said earlier, typically, the engineering firm was in charge of the construction engineering prepares punch list before it gets to the city. Quite honestly, that should be fixed before it even gets, brought, the city brought into it. And I don't think that has been done, from what I understand. So, I haven't been actively involved in it, but I'm asking questions, because I know the council's gonna have questions, so I'm trying to piece it together today.
Yeah.
To provide you with some information, so.
Sounds like we haven't, we don't have the information we need. So, I'm gonna go in this direction. In order to consider this request, which we will consider. We need to know what the, we need a new schedule for completion. We need dates for punch list walkdown. And we need anticipation of when final inspections can be started. I need that in writing from Heritage Homes in order to consider this request. Do you all agree?
Yes.
I agree.
Agreed.
And once we have that in hand, and understand the direction and the timeline and what we're facing on this. Then, and only then, will we take a look at additional requests having to do with onward and upward for this development. I'm open to additional commentary and suggestion, because I sound a little dictatorial there. But we've gone above and beyond, and we're bending over backwards here. But there's a big difference between bending over backwards and just bending over, period. So, I want to make sure we're all on the same page, and that we agree. I, I don't disagree that there are no CO will be issued, they just want to move forward, while we do too, and we need to close this project out.
I really like your idea. I like your idea of getting those details from them, and not necessarily saying no to this request, just needing those finalized, or those, I don't know, estimated completion.
Yep.
Items.
Give us, give us the information, so we know what to expect, and then that will help us make an educated decision on what we're dealing with. It's unfortunate we didn't have that information today, Jim, it sounded like you wanted to get it. Had we had that information today, I think we very likely could have made an intelligent decision here. All right, for the time being, I'm going to say, what, what type of emotion are we looking for here?
I don't think that. You just, you just table it, I can send them an email and say we need, it was discussed, this is supposed to be needed prior to approval.
I hate to continue doing that, but I, I feel like that's the position that we're both in at this time. They're wanting to move forward, we're wanting to move forward, we need to come together as a group to do that. And we're willing to consider moving forward if they're willing to give us the information we need for what the deadlines are, when this is gonna be done. Let's get some meetings on the calendar, I want to know when the inspections are gonna take place, I want to know, I want to see a punch list, put that as part of it, Jim. There's no reason we shouldn't have that at this point in time, it's the middle of September, so.
I don't think this is one where you want to do a big thing, just in case they, it's three weeks, by the time you come back. Granted, it is the time to do a level change.
It's too bad, because this is the time of year when you make hay. And I would, I would hope they would utilize this time to do everything in their power to get this completed.
Really, really quick, I would like to add, just so you're aware of, based on the time of year it is. I would be concerned for the council if you do have a approval of something like that, to where they need to have the development already go for the timeline. So I think it's a very good idea, you have the timeline, the punch list and all that. But you also have to keep in mind those items and how long they'll take to get addressed, because if they start that home. Then you may be in a situation where somebody is wanting to live in it before the development's infrastructure is done.
I agree.
So, that is why council has not had concerns with the spec homes and with the models, because nobody will be living in. This pre-sold, you would have somebody living, wanting to live into it, so. It is something just to keep in mind, I guess it reiterates the punch list importance, but that has been where our concern is. And Jim indicated that meeting was called off, they were supposed to meet at two-thirty today. It got called off, because the engineer didn't have punch list together, started really, was my understanding. It wasn't ready for our staff to even look at anything yet.
Please express our concerns and let them know that we want them to be successful, this is a first of its kind. I, I don't want to go down this path, and I realize it goes both ways, but at this late date, we, we really need those assurances. Because I'm fearful that we may lose our weather before we can complete this, and then we're gonna be in an entirely different situation. Okay. I'll make a motion to table this, and I'm looking for a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. And this will be tabled with the understanding that there are some requirements, as stated. Thank you. Engineering Public Works, Jim?
All right, council, the last two weeks have been pretty steady with special assessments, getting through all seven of those projects, and now getting through the special assessment commission portion, and getting it out to the next time the city council's going to do it. The last two weeks, still working on plugging away through, close on some of these projects that have been lingering, trying to get some sort of a way. Rivers Edge, we get some pretty good headway, they got some good projects going with boulevards and the landscape moving along, wheelbox kiosks being raised. So, the concerns that the council had, and the staff had about getting building in there is maybe the right direction, at least, maybe a little forward, if we'd like. But, we continue along with a couple of designs for construction next summer, including this fall. We've had some designs that we're at about a ninety percent submittal rate, and we've been paused just depending on the field for where it's going to be out this fall. And we've been in this, this winter, and early winters, we wanted to get along for, yeah, we're trying to pull it in as soon as the winter turns in, in the spring. So, that's kind of where we're at for that. But they did, the DOT did assign a January bid opening for the shared use path up front here, from Salon up to the downtown. So that one will be happening, it's in January next year, and that will be, will be big. So, we're moving something along, so I'm just happy.
Good, where are we at with completion on sixty-fourth?
Sixty-fourth, there's just a couple of items remaining, last week, I was told this morning, our staff needed a drill, and I'm not sure if I can run through there. And then just a couple of other things up to major, if you can, where we're, if we don't come out.
Okay, any concerns with Rivers Edge?
There was some concern with the, with the heating wall along some of the ponds, that was discussed in the meeting last week. The designer of the wall, and the developer, and the field, but that, the maintenance of that, that the city was considering to be part of the joint responsibility through the maintenance agreement. So, and that, that's what was decided, so probably going to back off on that one. And, so, so we have a maintenance agreement to identify who does what.
And do we have any further updates on the concerns raised at the pond in Lost River by residents? I know we had talked about it.
Nothing at all, we've, we've got a barrier issue with ruin, we've got some, or some of the hillside, we've got an email about pond quality in other areas, so it's.
Thank you.
We're gonna address this fall and winter.
As a larger issue?
As a large of a whole, that's.
I like that, because we do have an issue with that.
Yeah. There was the cattails in the water, sediment in the, not sediment, sediment in the, in the other, and just some things that we've got to get on a bigger scale, and just these little bits and pieces.
I appreciate that, because I do believe it's a, a much bigger issue across the board, okay? Any other comments on, questions for Jim?
Hey Sarah, I got a question.
Certainly, Jeff.
County Road fourteen, where's the county at with that? It's almost been one full year now that they have not planted.
I drove it on Friday, noticed that there wasn't anything done, and I didn't get a chance to talk to the county. So I will move that email that I sent to the top of the inbox, Mr. Mayor.
County Road fourteen continues to be a topic of discussion, okay? Thank you, Jim. Brenton, city administrator report.
Okay, the first thing I have, I should go, well, first thing, reminders, you have quite a few meetings coming up for special meetings. Next Monday night, we have budget hearing for twenty-twenty-six budget, six P M. here, on twenty-second, oh, six-thirty. Six-thirty, okay, at six-thirty. Park Board is at six P M. for their objection hearings, or budget public hearing. Ours is at six-thirty next Monday. October seventh, six P M., so that'll be a Tuesday night, after our next regular scheduled council meeting. We have objection hearings for Wall Avenue East and West, Chestnut Ironwood, and Sixty-Sixth Street. And then October eighth, at six P M., we'll have objection hearings for Sixty-third Street, Cup Creek Second, and Rivers Edge Second Edition. So, for council, you'll be able to, you'll have the objections, anybody that submits a written objection to me prior to the objection hearing can talk or address the council during that. For the proper process, if they don't submit that, technically, they shouldn't be able to talk, based on if we follow that to a T. Any objections, as a reminder, I feel like a broken record at times, but we stress this over and over, objections have to be submitted to me before the objection hearing. They could submit them to specials@cityhorse.com, to my email at behoper@cityhorse.com, drop them off at City Hall, or they could put them in the mail, if they put them in the mail. I need folks to remember, it is, we don't go by postmark date, so if I don't get it in the mail before the objection hearing, say I get it a day or two later, I can't do anything with it. So, that's something, you know, keep in mind, I try to remind people, if they are going to mail one, do it soon. That way they know for sure it get, it could get to us, or best chance it could get to us. Other than that, we have had a few objections coming in. I believe the, what the special assessing commission has completed for their recommendations for city council, I believe we have them posted online now.
The lists are online.
The lists are online, so folks can look at them. It will be published in the paper for this Wednesday, is my understanding. So the information is out there. I just always encourage folks, if they're going to submit objection, have helpful insight on why they're objecting, and what is their recommendation, like, why are they suggesting we do otherwise? If they just say object, that makes it more difficult for the council, because what can you do about that? So, just encourage folks to address things like that, and take a look at that proposed assessment amount from the special assessing commission. Because it has changed from what they may have seen a long time ago, like when SAC had their objection hearings, those numbers for some are different. So, something to keep in mind there. The other one I had for you is North Coast League of Cities Annual Conference is later this week. Nathaniel and I will be going out there for that. So, each year, we have city council identify delegates for it. Being, we have three seats for delegates, if anybody from council does want to go last minute, you're welcome to go, just out of the snow. But, we have two of us going out there, we have up to three seats for delegates. So we just need the council to identify who the, if you'd want Nathaniel and I both to be delegates. And if anybody else wants to go out there, they can, we just need to identify them as a third delegate. So, I just, I would need that from council saying if they would like that or not, so.
I have a question for council regarding the objection hearings. Do you guys feel like it would be necessary to put something on our Facebook page to basically state, like, look, now you can submit these to the specials email, list out the emails?
We, we plan on doing the communication effort, yes.
You plan on doing that? Um, do you plan on putting detail in that, like, you have to submit them to these emails?
Yeah.
Okay?
It would be pretty clear of saying, has to be submitted to this fashion.
Yes. I just want to make sure that we're very, very clear on the direction.
Yep.
So that there is no misinformation, or anybody saying that they were not able to object, because they, I mean, it's gonna be out there. I just want to make sure our communication is like, top-notch.
I also want to make sure that we're keeping a very accurate record on this, and I'll, I'll talk about it in my portfolio piece, but this is a much bigger issue. And we want to be able to have the addition to address this at more than just a Horace level, and I'll talk about that later, so. We should talk, Lucas. All right, anything else, Brenton?
No, I just need to know if council is good with having Nathaniel and I be delegates, or what you would like to do for delegates.
Jeff, do you have anything additional you'd like to add on that?
No, I do not.
Okay. All right, we'll move right into portfolio reports. Mr. Mayor?
I don't have a whole lot, I am remote this week. If you need to go help me, please feel free to send me an email or a text message, and I'll get back to you as quickly as I can. I will be back Friday afternoon. Other than that, as far as my portfolios, since we did a bean days last week, most of my stuff was focused on trying to make sure that went smoothly. And so, I do not have a lot for an update as of this week.
Okay, I know you're traveling, Jeff, best, safe travels and best wishes, come back to us in one piece, we need you, buddy. All right.
Sarah, really quick, we do need a motion for the delegates.
Oh, I apologize. A motion for what?
If you, if the council would like Nathaniel and I to do, be delegates for Horse for the League of Cities Conference, or what you would like to do.
I mean, is anybody else going?
I apologize, I didn't see, it doesn't say.
No, I'm not able to attend.
I know.
I'm not able to attend either.
Okay.
Are you going?
I am not, so I don't think we have a need for that, because we have bigger things, bigger fish to fry right now for Horse.
I guess I'll then just make a motion then to have Brenton and Nathaniel be the delegates at the League of Cities Conference.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you for letting me know, there's nothing recommended for an action here, so, okay. With that, I'll move right into my report. As you can see, infrastructure is gonna be winding down this year, we're gonna be losing our weather here pretty quickly. We have a number of projects we need to finish out, and a number of things we need to close out. So, I had an opportunity this weekend to get around to many different parts of the city, there's a lot of people that saw me driving. That man in particular, Take Care Keller. And I, I want to be clear that we cannot have things that continue to roll over. We really need to push the things that are in our control to completion. And I think we're on a good track here to get a lot of this wrapped up in twenty-twenty-five, provided that our weather holds out. So I'd like to see a really big push on punch lists, and getting things closed out so that we have funds available by the end of this year, moving into next year. Bean Days was an absolute blast, congratulations to so many, and Mr. Mayor, you're included there as well, and all of the staff. I cannot tell you how absolutely wonderful it was to see so many smiling faces. Paul, you did a heck of a job, so I think Bean Days was fun, I've heard nothing but good things, have we received any complaints? So I think Bean Days was fun. I've heard nothing but good things. Have we received any complaints about Bean Days? A few? I think the, the, one of the biggest, um, concerns that I heard was just having the parade not so early in the morning after everyone was out the night before. Um, Jeff, I know you had mentioned something about that.
Yep. Yep. I was tired even that morning. Rachel was really tired that morning.
I think everybody was, so we'll, we'll take that feedback. And if there's any others, please, uh, share it with us so that we can make improvements for next year.
That five K or the run in the morning, I feel like a lot of parents were dragging, um, because it was also the Bio Girls official run, uh, which I think might be, it's in the works to potentially not have those, not have the Bio Girls run be part of Bean Days because it is just such a busy weekend for families, but it's something we can keep talking about.
Good. Awesome. Um, the last part of this, I, I want to address something. Um, one of my fellow council members shared a letter with me received from District Twenty-seven. Our representative there, uh, Mr. T J, Timothy Brown. And it was shared on Jay Thomas and an inforum. And I got some heartburn over this, and I'm going to share some personal thoughts here as a part of my portfolio, because I oversee infrastructure, which is the roads and whatnot, and special assessments have been a, a large concern for quite some time. Our Assessment Commission, um, has come to us on repeated occasion and, and I want to let people know this is a much bigger issue than just the city of Horace. You have five people up here. We're all elected officials. However, we have full-time jobs. We're moms, we're dads, we are paid a very small stipend for our time up here. And I can say that when I read this letter, I was taken a little bit aback. Lucas, can I have permission to read this here? It's publicly released. I, I'd like to read it. So I'm going to be reading off my phone, but, uh, TJ issued, "As both a resident of Horace and the elected state representative for District Twenty-seven, I am deeply disappointed by the recent actions taken by Horace city officials. Elected leaders have a duty to ensure our communities can thrive. That begins with making sure families can actually afford to live in them. Unfortunately, Horace officials have shown themselves to be tone deaf to the realities facing their constituents. Instead of listening to the people they serve, they've chosen to prioritize unchecked growth and personal agendas. The massive spike in special assessments being forced on to homeowners is unacceptable and out of touch with the needs of working families. At the state level, I will work to place strict guardrails on the use of special assessments so that local officials can no longer treat them like a blank check, a tool to raid the pockets of hard-working families under the guise of progress. Growth should never come at the cost of driving people out of their homes. I strongly encourage every resident of Horace to make their voices heard. Contact your city officials, show up at every meeting, and most importantly, remember that your voice is the greatest accountability measure you hold. Do not allow these policies to continue harming your families, your homes, and your community." He quotes the great Thomas Jefferson in saying, "When the people fear the government, there is tyranny. When the government fears the people, there is liberty." No salutation, T J Brown. I don't know how the rest of this council feels, but I have a real problem with this, and I'm going to tell you why. Special assessments is not something that is stuck in only the city of Horace. A basic Google search tells me that communities like Fargo, West Fargo, Grand Forks, Minot, Jamestown, and even Grafton, Beulah, and Rugby are all impacted by special assessments. I spoke a little over a year ago on special assessments that impacted my folks who had lived in their home since the nineteen fifties. Okay? And I'm going to tell you, I've heard the voices of the residents. And this condescending letter from Mr. Brown, who I don't believe I've ever seen at one of these meetings, nor was he active when we talked about the policies and procedures and enacting them here, um, is really the epitome of the pot calling the kettle black. I agree with the Horace residents that these assessments are a challenge. And we, as a council of five thousand people, are doing our very best to come up with a solution and rectify it. But I will not stand for a district legislator who, I will add, we've gone time and time and time again in front of our state's legislation, and we've been given maybe ten minutes. We have repeatedly asked for help. We have applied for grants.
We have.
And we get sidewalks, okay? This is the largest growing community in the state of North Dakota with an unbelievable amount of pressure. Repeatedly, we've asked for help. Repeatedly, we've gone to legislators. Repeatedly, we've met with Fargo, West Fargo, you name it, everybody we can think of. We are at our wits' end, and we need some damn help. That's all I have to say on the matter, but I really hope that Mr. Brown reaches out to me because I would absolutely love to have a conversation with him as our District Twenty-seven legislator about exactly what it is he's going to do to help us move this, for, move this cause forward at a state level and not just the level of our tiny little town, because I think it's a much bigger issue. And I would welcome an open discussion with him about how we can effectively do that. Any other comments from council?
Yes, sir, this is Jeff.
Yes, sir.
I did try to have a, uh, conversation with Mr. Brown, uh, the night he wrote that, and I was sworn at, and, uh,
You were, you were sworn at when you talked to him?
Yes, I was. Yes, I was. Um, he, he did not want to have the conversation, so, um, I too would welcome the conversation, and I, I hope he does reach out to us.
That's all I've got for my portfolio. Naomi.
Well, I appreciate your comments, um, Sarah. I, I too was a little bit, uh, taken aback by the, by the letter. I did actually reach out to him. I had a conversation with him. Um, I told him that I agree that we are in a tough situation. Um, I said I appreciate his, uh, his personal stance, um, on specials, but I, I do believe that, I mean, I share the same sentiment as you. Um, we do need help, and I really, really wish that, um, we could have had a dialogue um, with a sitting representative who's supposed to be helping, um, the community. Um, before that letter was written, I also, you know, this last week politically around the world, around our nation, has been extremely difficult. And I apologize for getting very emotional about this, but, you know, everyone always says that, you know, something terrible could never happen in my town. Nope, nothing bad will ever happen to, to my sitting council member. Nope, we'll never have that school shooting in our schools. Um, I feel like it was very politically charged, um, and I'm, I'm deeply saddened by the comments of saying that we have personal agendas when, um, you're in the assessment district, you're in an assessment district, you're in an assessment district, mine are coming. Um, it just seemed, um, really, after what we've seen and witnessed this last week, it broke my heart because we need to be coming together as a community, and I don't want to be afraid um, that somebody could come in here upset enough to have political violence. And I would hope, and I pray, I am a Christian woman, I pray that that never happens. But after this political rhetoric, um, this week, I was actually very afraid. And I did, I did tell my mayor that, so. Um, sorry to get emotional about that, but we will do our best when it comes to the special assessments, um, that everyone is facing. And please know that we are working very hard behind the scenes for the residents who live here. Because we all live here, and we all love Horace. Um, as far as any updates that I have, I really don't have any. My, um, planning and zoning meeting got, um, got canceled last week, and I just want to introduce Nathaniel. Um, I'm not sure if any of you guys have met Nathaniel. He is now part of, um, the planning and zoning, uh, development, um, staff member, I guess, um, and he has come and he has been doing a great job, so please welcome him to our community. And, um, thank you, Nate, for being here tonight, and that's all I got.
Thanks, Naomi.
Yep.
Thank you. I, uh, I want to say I completely share the sentiments of my special, of my council members. I was also completely taken aback at the unprofessional nature of, and really disappointed in that letter that he issued on his, uh, State of North Dakota letterhead. Um, I take great exception to the accusation that we have personal agendas, uh, with regard to this process. It's very offensive to me. I take great exception to it. I guess as an elected official himself, um, I really wish he would have reached out to us directly to have a conversation so he could have had and gained an understanding of the process. Um, without even talking to us and issuing a letter like that is, uh, very unprofessional. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Stephanie. Rachel.
Um, I also would echo my council members up here that I was also shocked by the letter and disappointed. I think you guys have all said it really well. Um, switching gears, Bean Days was great, like Sarah said. We, Paul, do you know any totals of how many people came out to the dances? Okay, okay, okay. Um, it was cold, and I think maybe the weather didn't help, but it was really fun. I think everyone had a great time, and it was in a little bit of a hostile environment, just with all the things that are on our plate right now. I feel like it was really good to just be in the same place, having a great time together. Um, and I'm excited to see those numbers you're talking about. We had a ribbon-cutting ceremony for Freed. That was kind of special with the Freed family there.
Very special.
Yep, and just a lot of really cool moments at Bean Days that were, um, either fun or meaningful. And let's see, Park Board, I think I haven't seen you guys more recently than I've been there, so that's, that's everything.
Thanks, Rachel. Rest assured, your council and your staff in this small town are working diligently, and we take the concerns very seriously. We have for some time. But this is a much broader issue, just like the ponds that Jim talked about in our little town. This is an issue across the state that needs to be addressed, and we need some, we need some heavy hitters to back us up because we're fighting, um, against some large communities that have revenue streams that we don't. We don't want to put these types of amounts on people. And right now, because of the limitations that we have as a small, growing community, we are struggling. I hope everyone has a really good night. I'll be looking for a motion to dismiss.
So moved. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for coming.
Have a good night, guys.